Is for 401, it just turned 401. Call to order, uh, roll call. Let's, uh, let's see, Ryan, you want to do the roll call?
Okay, sure. Rick Miller?
Here.
Ryan Fitzsimmons?
Here.
John Lebert?
Here.
Kurt Hunsinger?
Here.
All right, let the roll call show that, uh, the only one missing is the Mayor of St. Cloud, Dave Kleis. Uh, are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, I have a couple of changes. Item number 12 will be titled, "Consideration of Teamsters Collective Bargaining Agreement", and that will be given by Sonny Hess. And there will be no closed session following this board meeting.
All right, great. Somebody want to move to approve, uh, well, I need to, yeah, somebody want to move to approve, uh, approve gen- uh, the change in gen- agenda?
Uh, Hunsiger, make a motion to approve the agenda with the stated changes.
Fitzsimmons, second.
Further discussion. Want a roll call vote, Ryan?
Sure. Rick Miller?
Aye.
Kurt Hunsinger?
Aye.
John Lebert?
Aye.
Ryan Fitzsimmons?
Aye.
All right, that passes. Uh, consent agenda items, item five, December 15th, 2020 minutes. Item six, October, November, and December budget statements and bank rec- bank statements. Item seven, it's four o'clock, can't you hear my clock? Item seven, October, November, and December list of bills, and item eight, December 2020 fixed route, dial-a-ride, North Star linked ridership reports. Somebody want to move to approve?
Motion to approve, Lebert.
Hunsiger, second.
Further discussion. Roll call vote, Ryan?
Uh, Rick Miller?
Aye.
Ryan Fitzsimmons?
Aye.
John Lebert?
Aye.
Kurt Hunsinger?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously for those of us present. Is there anyone here for open forum? Nobody on board for open forum?
No.
All right, general business, number nine, presentation of the audit, pre- preliminary audited financial statements. Steve?
Excellent. Can, can you hear me, first of all?
Yes.
Quick audio check. Thank you very much. Well, uh, again, it's a, uh, pleasure to join you today to go through the, uh, preliminary audit results. And, uh, hopefully I can, uh, share some good news with you. I think it was a very stable year, given all the uncertainty with, uh, COVID. We had a discussion this morning with, uh, with Ryan and Paula, uh, to, to go over the, uh, the, the results. And I'd like to, uh, share a, uh, PowerPoint presentation with you, uh, today. Walk through that briefly and, uh, answer any questions you may have at this time. So I am going to attempt to share my screen. And let me know if you can see the audited financial statements slide deck.
Perfect.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. So, again, our job as auditors is to provide an opinion on your financial res- information at, as of September 30th, uh, 2020, and a couple of comments here on the audit process and then our independent auditors', uh, report per se. Um, we did move to a remote auditing, uh, environment this year due to, to, due, due to COVID, um, so that did impact the process. Um, did impact your financial results a little bit, but I think you could be very happy to know that, uh, you basically had a break-even year with, uh, with all the things that were going on, uh, and I'll, I'll talk through some of the things that changed, uh, significantly. But, uh, I do want to just thank, uh, uh, Ryan, Paula, and their team for the, uh, the audit process. Being that it's remote, it was a little bit more back and forth, uh, collection of information, so we really appreciate the extra effort that they did. Um, so we did, like I said, majority of our audit work was done off-site and, uh, as a, but I just want to let you know that we did the same audit, uh, that we've always done as far as, uh, what we're looking at, what we're testing, those types of things. We just, uh, obviously, uh, gathered that information in a little bit more of a remote environment. So, um, again, today we are talking that it is a preliminary report because we're, we're still waiting for the Public Employees Retirement Association or Para Pension information, uh, that would, will be audited as of June 30th, uh, 2020. That usually comes out in February of the following year. That will adjust your, um, your theoretical, uh, long-term liability of the unfunded PERA pension, uh, number that's, uh, shown on your front-end statements. So, again, the last, uh, three years or so, we've kind of done that where we've done the preliminary, uh, beforehand and then done the final, uh, you know, in February, March, and then released the, uh, the report with that adjustment in there. I think the important thing there is to note, though, is that from an operational perspective, uh, your information really does not change. You're, you, we've already recognized the, uh, the contributions for the PERA match that the, the employer, the MTC, uh, provides to your employees. Uh, it's really more on the high end, uh, the front-end type statements that will be making that adjustment. So from a budgetary standpoint, from a fund balance standpoint, those numbers will not change. Um, uh, second point, just the, the CARES Act funding for 2020 for the audit. Uh, a little over $1.5 million was recognized as revenues and, and expenditures. Uh, that was one component of the, uh, the, the little bit of a delay that we had in issuing the information. Uh, they, the federal government was a little bit behind in getting out the actual audit requirements for the CARES Act funding. Uh, but as a result, uh, because of the significance of that, we did test that, uh, this year. We were no, no issues reported. Uh, but do want to let you know that that is subject to federal audit as well, and that is just a known, uh, fact that, uh, they have the opportunity to come in and do kind of a secondary audit, if you want to say. Um, and, but, uh, again, uh, that'll be probably a year or so down the road, so. Um, and then a couple of final things on the in- independent auditors' report, uh, the financial statements again, uh, pages two, three, and four is our independent auditor's opinion. Uh, just talk about the financial statements are the responsibility of management. So Ryan, Paula, and team, uh, capture that daily information, report it to you on a monthly basis, uh, a quarterly basis from a budget-to-actual perspective. Uh, provide that annual information to us for au- for audits. So we're doing a variety of tests, confirmation of balances, uh, confirmation of grant amounts, uh, testing of expenditures, of payroll, uh, those types of things. And again, we believe we've done sufficient audit work for our opinion, which is an un- unmodified opinion, which is the top of page three on the financial statements, uh, the printed page three. So again, in our opinion, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. So the highest level we issue, uh, the best you can receive. So again, congratulations for receiving that, uh, highest level of assurance. And again, the reason it is preliminary is, is because of the fact that we're going to, uh, incorporate the PERA pension adjustment on, once that information is available, so. Moving on to slide three, just talks about some of the communications. And again, we, we issued because of a federal, of the federal, uh, funding in the audit, uh, we did provide, um, a report in compliance with the government auditing standards and the uniform guidance in accordance with the, uh, the, the federal standards. Again, there were no compliance issues noted. We did test the CARES Act funding of 1.5 million. I believe you were allocated about $7.5 million, so you just started spending that, uh, this year with about that $1.5 million. Um, you did also have other, uh, federal dollars, uh, recognized this year, I think about $3.5 million in total, so. Uh, but the largest one was the CARES Act funding, and as a result of that, that is the, uh, program that we so- were selecting to test. As far as internal control findings, uh, very consistent from prior years, just those standard things, uh, with a smaller organization. Again, uh, lack of segregation of accounting duties. You have very good internal controls. They're not perfect. Uh, it's because of the, there's a small staff that you have doing all the, uh, the accounting work. We're not re- recommending you change anything. Just realize there are some inherent limitations in you as a Board of Commissioners, again, to continue to analyze the expenditures, the reports that you get to make sure you're comfortable with the, uh, the expenditures that are going out and the, the recognition of the revenues and those types of things. And then finally, uh, there's just one audit adjustment we made, just, uh, for some of the grant activity at year end, and that was really just related to some timing things. Uh, again, not, not a, uh, a big issue at all, but again, just one thing we need to report, uh, for that. So again, uh, Paula and Ryan and team do a great job, uh, with the, uh, the information. And again, uh, very, uh, very, very well done as far as the audit process and, uh, getting us the information we need, so. Uh, we, we also are required to test, report on compliance with Minnesota legal compliance. Again, we're making sure you're adequately collateralized and invested in things that are in accordance with state statute, bids and quotes, uh, and a variety of other, um, Minnesota legal provisions. There were no findings on compliance with the legal provisions. So again, uh, a clean, uh, report there, and that is in the very back of the audit, uh, report that, uh, you received as well. And then finally, our communications letter, uh, just has some required communications, some financial analysis and emerging issues. Uh, nothing relating to required communication out of the ordinary, so just wanted to mention that, uh, nothing to, uh, report, um, out of the ordinary. The financial analysis will be going through. And then one emerging issue is just relating to how we account for some of the leases, which, uh, will have li- little if no impact, uh, on the, uh, the MTC. So with that, I'm going to just spend a couple of minutes going through some financial highlights, uh, just a very brief look at inventory balances. Did increase a little bit this year, up about $219,000. When you look at the overall, um, levels, though, in comparison with all the various assets that you have of, uh, you know, 30-some million dollars, uh, $50 million, excuse me, it's a very small number. But, uh, does, did increase a little bit this year due to some Fairbox inventory parts, uh, some fluids, and then some air conditioning parts that were on hand at the end of the year versus prior years. So have seen a little bit of a trend increase there over the five years presented. So, um, again, just to continue to, uh, make sure you have what you need, but, uh, not too much in the inventory balance. And again, I think you're, you're doing fine with those levels where they're at. Slide number five looks at the operating revenues, uh, again, by source, and you will see a fairly significant drop in, in revenues this year. Uh, last year's revenues are about $18.8 million. This year in 2020, about $15.1 million. And very briefly, a $3.7 million decrease. About $700,000, uh, of the decrease was due to Fairbox revenue, just because of the, uh, the, the COVID, the coronavirus pandemic. Uh, about a $2.3 million reduction in state aids. A lot of that had to do with the matching requirement, the local match. Uh, used to be 10% of, of, uh, local funds for fixed route operations. That did go up to 20%. So as a result, the state aids went down and some of the local contributions went up. That was a big driver for that. And then the, uh, federal funding was down about $790,000 as well, just due to lower costs and some of the lower, uh, capital-type, uh, reimbursement requests there as well. So both operating and capital. So, uh, 2020 revenues, again, significantly down, uh, due to a variety of factors, uh, uh, COVID, uh, some of the state, uh, uh, funding mechanisms, et cetera. This is probably the most important slide in, in my opinion, and I just want to show that, and, you know, for all the five years presented, you've had a surplus in to- the total revenues exceeding total expenses. Uh, they were a little more significant in 2008, 17, 18, and 19, but for 2020, uh, you did have a slight profit, if you want to say. So you had $17,211,000 of revenues and capital grants, $17,202,000 of expenses, including depreciation, so about a $9,000 increase. In a very tumultuous, um, year, if you want to say, with, with COVID and things on that nature. I think the fact that, uh, yeah, you maintained your position is, is, is excellent, so I just wanted to point that out as a commentary. And, uh, again, you know, uh, we talked this morning a little bit about, uh, the reason you have reserves and fund balances is to weather those, those rainy days. Uh, and obviously, this is one of those years where not only is it raining, but it's probably pouring, and you maintain that level of, of financial stability throughout all of that. So I think that's a, a very good testament to, uh, to your team and, uh, and how they reacted to, uh, the changing environment and, you know, cut costs where they needed to, made sure they had sufficient revenues to cover those expenditures. So, uh, very nice job there. Slide number seven just looks at the financial position. So again, that's kind of the equity, if you want to say, in the, uh, of, of the MTC. And a couple of things I just want to point out, again, that total net position did not, was relatively unchanged, up about $9,000. Uh, you're, you're the second from the top line, that is the, uh, investment in capital assets, and that did go up about $433,000. So again, you continue to invest in the buses and the equipment and the, you know, construction and the hard costs, if you want to say. Uh, so that is a good sign. You didn't defer that entirely. You, you did defer a few things, but you do keep, you did keep investing in, uh, in the, uh, the property plant and equipment operationally. Um, the, uh, second from the bottom one, the $13,482, that is your unrestricted cash balance. The reason we mention it as unrestricted is you do have about $1 million of restricted cash for the debt. That's outstanding of about $3 million. Um, that'll be done in about four years. Uh, the main reason that was down from $14.8 million down to, uh, $13.5 roughly, or about a $1.3 million decrease, uh, is just due to the, some of the timing on the state grants. You actually, the third quarter grant, which you should have received roughly around September 30th, did come on shortly after year end, so the receivable balance was higher. Uh, and as a result, the cash balance was a little bit lower, so that was replenished shortly after, uh, audit year end. And then your unassigned net position, uh, did decrease from about $5.8 million down to about $4.6 million, but is in, really in the range of the five-year period. Uh, the re- main reason for that, uh, decrease is that you did actually assign about 3/4 of a million dollars that you did not spend for fixed asset acquisitions or buses, and we'll be showing that here on the next screen. So again, um, that's, that's the main reason that that declined. Otherwise, everything maintained a very healthy, uh, balances there. Slide number eight looks at, again, those assignments, and again, the, the one thing I just mentioned, uh, is that assigned for fixed assets, $2,432.95. Again, increased from about $1,680,000, so about 3/4 of a million dollar increase there. So again, what that is, is that's kind of that unspent budget for, for the buses, uh, in 2020. That'll happen in the future. So instead of keeping that in unassigned or showing that as unassigned or, or discretionary, uh, you did decide to park that and put that into the assigned for fixed assets, so I just wanted to mention that as well. Capital expenditures, uh, for this year, about $2.5 million. That's, uh, kind of on the low end of the five years there. The high point is 2018 of about $6.2 million. Uh, the low end is about $2.5 million. So again, uh, some of the, uh, timing on the buses kind of kept that a little bit lower, so we would expect that to pick up, uh, in the next couple of years when, uh, hopefully things are back into the new normal that we're, uh, expecting. And again, a couple of final, uh, slides here, just this looks at operating revenues, uh, by, by source. So for every dollar that's received, how, what percentage is coming from a variety of, uh, sources? And again, the state grants is, all of them are within about two or three percentage points. Uh, the state grants were very consistent, just down about, uh, a half a percent. Uh, some of the bigger changes were your passenger fares. Now five, was at 5% this year compared to 7.8 due to that, uh, reduction from about $1.5 million down to about $800,000 or about a $700,000 decrease there. So as a result of that going down, uh, some of the other ones did pick up a little bit, uh, the, from a percentage standpoint, the tax levy did increase, uh, from a percentage standpoint, but your overall tax levy remained very consistent, so I just wanted to point that out as well. And then federal grants is in that 10 to 12% range. It was down a little bit, uh, in 2020. We do that same analysis for expenses, and again, uh, all within a percentage point or two. Um, you do see general administration was up a little bit, vehicle maintenance was down, which you would expect if you, if you're maybe not running the buses as much as, uh, as, as normal. Uh, facility maintenance was a little bit lower, and then the, uh, fixed route and dial-a-ride operational about, uh, just less than 1% increase. So all very, very consistent. I think that's really the important thing, is that from a dollar-to-dollar standpoint, uh, things were, uh, were, were very, uh, very consistent. Um, one final comment on this one. We also look at kind of your budgeted, uh, operations and your, your, your operations budget was very much right on track. Your capital expenditures were a little bit lower than budget, just due to some of the timing with the, uh, the buses that we, uh, mentioned. And, uh, so overall, the budgeting process, uh, again, remains sound and, uh, in very good, uh, uh, very good condition. So, again, I think you did a really nice job weathering the storm, if you want to say, maintaining a very, uh, level, uh, financial position in this, uh, challenging year. And, uh, obviously, some of the, the CARES Act funding did help with that, uh, the $1.5 million that was recognized. And, uh, with that, I'll just close and say, I just really want to thank, uh, Ryan and Paula and staff for, for their assistance with the, uh, the remote, uh, the change in the remote environment, if you want to say, from the auditor's perspective. Uh, but again, we did the, the same level of audit that we've always done, digging deep into a variety of things. Uh, and, and again, things are a little bit different every year of what we look at. Uh, but we really appreciate the extra effort that they did to, uh, to get us the information, get it to us electronically, answer those questions a little bit more back and forth and those types of things, so. Um, so again, we will, uh, wrap up the audit, uh, once that PERA information is available. Should, and, uh, hopefully within, uh, 30 to 60 days, there'll be a final version, uh, of the audit that can be filed again with, uh, state and federal, uh, agencies, so. Um, happy to answer any questions you may have, uh, at this point in time, uh, so I will pause right there and, uh, we'll, and, uh, ask if you have any questions.
Commissioners, you got any comments or questions?
No, I'm sorry, I was late, Rick.
Oh, okay, you got it, Dave. We're, we're just wrapping up the audit, so I, I think it's just for information purposes, I don't, you don't need a motion for anything, do you, on this?
No.
Or, or do you want us to make a mo- you want us to approve the preliminary?
You know, that, that would, that'd really be up to you. Uh, generally, what happens is you would, um, maybe recognize or acknowledge that the preliminary was a, was, was, um, discussed, and then the final one would be approved when, when that is, uh, available. That's, um, historically the way I think you do it, but that is, that is up to you.
That's right, yeah, I, I brought a motion then to accept, uh, just to ex- acknowledge the acceptance of the preliminary.
Lebert, so moved.
Hunsiger, second.
Further discussion. Roll call vote, Ryan?
Uh, Rick Miller?
All right.
Dave Kleis?
Aye.
John Lebert?
Aye.
Kurt Hunsiger?
Aye.
Ryan Fitzsimmons?
Aye.
Excellent.
All right.
Also much for your time.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Yep.
We're on item 10, Dave.
All right, well, uh, item 10 then, Ryan, Ryan.
Item 10 is the consideration of the final 2021 program of projects, and that will be given by Paula Masti.
Little, little lull.
Can you hear me?
Now we can.
Okay. Uh, I've been having some sound issues. I thought we got it fixed, so I'll, I'll be yelling, but anyway. Good afternoon, commissioners. The, uh, final program of projects is on the agenda for approval today. We did bring forward the, uh,
You're kind of, you're kind of muffled, Paula. You're kind of muffled.
Can you hear me?
Better now.
Okay, we have the proposed program of projects, uh, that came forward, um, we didn't have it out for a 30-day comment period and didn't get any response to that, so now we're just looking for approval for the final program of projects.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Miller, so move.
Lebert, second.
Been moved and approved. Any further discussion on that, the list? Seeing or hearing none? Uh, Ryan, want to take the roll?
Uh, Dave Kleis?
Aye.
Rick Miller?
Aye.
John Lebert?
Aye.
Kurt Hunsiger?
Aye.
Ryan Fitzsimmons?
Aye.
All right, that passes unanimously. Uh, the next item, Ryan?
Consideration of Metro Bus procurement policies, manual revisions, and that will be given by Gary Cornet.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Uh, Gary here. I just want to do a quick audio check. Coming through, okay?
You're coming through loud.
Loud, clear. All right. Well, this is kind of a two-part request of the initial, uh, part of this is, is, uh, in response to, uh, National Defense Act, uh, statute change that was actually implemented back in, uh, 2018. And the statute was changed to, uh, simplify the spend thresholds for major procurements or any type of competitive computer, uh, procurements, uh, using federal or state money. And, uh, I know, just as a memory refresh, uh, we had made some revisions to this policy back in, uh, September, which, uh, the changes took effect as it's, uh, October 1st of 2020. And, uh, when Paula Masti and I were deliberating whether or not we wanted to, uh, adjust our spend thresholds at that time to near the state thresholds or to bump them straight up to the federal thresholds, we decided to wait until the state, uh, enacted on changing their statutes, and three months later, here we are. So as a result, uh, we would like to, uh, amend our, our policy to reflect the federal statute changes, uh, for, for, uh, uh, micro purchases. So, and I apologize because when we, um, when we, uh, uh, did, went from a Word document to a PDF document, it didn't, didn't, uh, bring the changes with it. So those dollar amounts that you're seeing as part of the agenda pack are actually the old dollar amounts yet. But a micro purchase will now, uh, range from one cent to $9,999.99. A small purchase will be, um, not, uh, $10,000 to $249,999.99. And a formal purchase will be $250,000 plus. Um, along with those changes, uh, we also revised some of the language in reference to, um, utilizing joint or state of Minnesota cooperative purchasing venture contracts. Uh, we had some language in the, uh, in our policy in regards to that, but, uh, we wanted to, to revise that language a bit to better mirror what the federal requirements and, and, uh, uh, standards are. So, uh, if there are any questions or any comments to these requested changes, uh, I would appreciate the approval of these revisions to our Metro Bus procurement policies.
Let's, uh, can take a motion, uh, before we discuss, or a motion to approve?
Lebert, motion to approve.
For a second?
Hunsiger, second.
Okay, is there any discussion on the, the changes in the policy? Hearing none? Um, then, uh, Ryan, you want to take the roll?
Dave Kleis?
Aye.
Rick Miller?
Aye.
John Lebert?
Aye.
Kurt Hunsiger?
Aye.
Ryan Fitzsimmons?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Uh, next item, Ryan?
Consideration of Teamsters Collective Bargaining Agreement, and this will be given by Sonny Hess.
All right.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, since our last, uh, board meeting in December, um, we've had several conversations with our Teamsters Business Agent as well as the Teamsters Negotiation Committee, um, and we were actually able to reach a tentative agreement on January 8th. Um, the union did, um, review the tentative agreement with the members on Saturday, this past Saturday, the 16th, and the members did vote to accept that tentative agreement. Um, you should have all received just a brief summary or, um, highlights of the revisions. Um, I think the area, uh, to, to note would be the wage increases. Um, we ended up agreeing to a 2% general wage increase effective 10/1/2020 with back pay, a 2% general wage increase effective 10/1/2021, and then a wage re-opener for 10/1/2022. Um, a couple of the other items highlighted, um, regarding changes. We did make some changes to language regarding assigning extra work, and that was in an attempt to minimize the burnout due to forced work, um, for employees. Um, we did make some changes to our accrued vacation language as far as how and when it's paid out. Um, and then we also increased our contributions to our, for our health and welfare benefits by $5 per week per employee, uh, for each con- or for each year of the contract. Um, and then the pension contributions went up slightly for each year of the contract as well. Does anybody have any questions?
Uh, any questions? No, it could work, uh.
It took a while, but we're happy.
Yeah, well, it saved us a half another meeting here in a, in a few moments, so that's good.
And it's a full day of mediation tomorrow, so we were scheduled for mediation.
Yeah, I know, that's good. Um, is there a motion, uh, need a motion to approve?
Miller, move to approve.
A second?
Lebert, second.
The motion, uh, and second, any, any further discussion? Hearing none, uh, or seeing none? Uh, Ryan, can you take the roll, please?
Uh, Dave Kleis?
Aye.
Rick Miller?
Aye.
John Lebert?
Aye.
Kurt Hunsiger?
Aye.
Ryan Fitzsimmons?
Aye.
That passes unanimously. Um, Ryan, next?
Next would be the COVID-19 update. We are monitoring our ridership trends weekly, and in the effort to keep everyone safe, we will be distributing masks to our customers. Approximately 4,000 masks are on order, and once they arrive, we will have them available at our transit center and aboard all of our Dollar Ride and Connects buses. In closing, we are close to completing our installation process of operated shields across our entire fleet. In closing, we are close to completing our installation process of operated shields across our entire fleet. I would like to take a moment to recognize, few staff recognitions here. I would like to take a moment to recognize Paula Masti on another year of success with regards to our company's finance and budget. This year has been a challenging year, but we were able to pull through successfully with Paula's leadership and expertise. Revenue still exceeded expenses. On behalf of Metro Bus, thank you, Paula. We really appreciate it. Also, I would like to take a moment to recognize the union negotiating, I'm sorry, the union negotiation committee, Sean, Dave, Missy and Sonny, for their hard work and dedication on settling both the Teamsters and ASME collective bargaining agreements. Metro Bus wishes Dave a happy birthday on the 21st. And in closing, congratulations to Ryan Fitzsimmons on being selected by the Sinclair Times as this year's top five under 40. Thank you.
Thank you, and congratulations, Ryan, on that. You look way more than 40, so I was really surprised.
I got to tell you, I think we need, I think we need a person to get it.
I don't look a day older than Rick Miller. I can assure you of that.
I go along with that.
Thank you.
Oh, that's really cool. Is that your final update, Ryan, or do you got more?
No, that's all. I'll take any questions you have regarding any information I gave. But yeah, that completes the update. Just wanted to just take a moment to appreciate the staff members just for all the hard work that they've done in the various departments.
I ditto that. That's great, especially on the negotiation and the labor agreement and on the budget. And the audit was really good, too. I mean, that helps to get all that CARES money, though. I wish, it wouldn't be nice if all of our cities got the same type of CARES funding to help with revenue. I think we'd all enjoy that piece, but maybe that's coming. Who knows? With that, I assume since there's no other business unless commissioners have it, take a motion to adjourn.
Hunstiger, motion to adjourn.
Miller, second.
Moved and seconded. Ryan, take the roll on adjournment.
Dave Kleis?
Aye.
Rick Miller?
Aye.
John Libbert?
Aye.
Ryan Fitzsimmons?
Aye.
Kurt Hunstiger?
Aye.
All right, that's unanimous. We are adjourned. Have a great rest of your week.